Had a good meal before this. A employee appreciation meal. I try, happened to try all the Chili's and I don't know how. But judging from my waistline, I do know how. Let's go ahead and look at the minutes. Have you, have you guys had a chance to review the minutes? From their regular council meeting on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Any additions, omissions or corrections that need to be made?
None for me.
None for me.
I'll make a motion then to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Close, none. Motion carries. With regards to the executive session that was also held that day, I don't see any omissions or corrections that need to be made.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
That's motion then second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, none. Move on to Mr. Chad Klein at downtown.
We're gonna, we're gonna swap.
Yeah, Chad.
Chad.
Okay. You go ahead Nick. So, let's go to Sandra Chavez, Region 3A.
Alright. So, I have a couple things in front of you. Matt and I have been talking. He's on our call board at Region 3A. I'm Sandra Smith. So, we've kind of been talking. There's been, Huntington County actually did this program. It's the owner occupied repair program. And I just kind of wanted to give you guys an outline on what that looks like. Bluffton actually did one as well. They're waiting to hear if they were awarded or not. And so you guys are kind of in the, in the range of everybody that's kind of, that's taking advantage of the project. I told Matt, make sure you get numbers here. So when Huntington did their project, they actually had three in Markle that applied. There, there's qualifications that they have to go through as far as I see homeowners going through an application, but three applied in Huntington County's application and one was awarded. And we'll get to that, kind of like what that looks like, but I wanted to state that before I missed it. So the O R program, it's done through O C R A, Office of Community and Rural Affairs. They started this program, I think, two or three years ago. Indiana Housing Authority used to manage it and then they stopped and O C R took it over. There's a lot of similarities, but there's also a lot different as far as the management side goes. So overall, this program, what it would look like for Markle is, Markle would do the application and if awarded, the cities and towns get three hundred and fifty thousand. Counties, so like Huntington County when they did theirs, they were awarded five hundred thousand. Then the, to go in, it's a ten percent match. So for three hundred and fifty thousand, they take it as a total grant award. It'd be, what is it, forty? Like it's between like thirty-eight thousand and forty. It's like the exact ten percent match. So basically, they, you guys could use that money, the three hundred and fifty thousand plus match, and homeowners in Markle would go through like an application through Region 3A and Markle. We, we helped with that, for like what an application cycle looks like. Your homeowners have to meet certain qualifications, L M I. There's a lot of things that go through that, so L M I. So lower moderate income, veteran, single household family, disabled, all of those things go into that equation. And those homeowners can apply for this program. So there are certain things that they can, so roofs, ADA thresholds, so your ramps up to a porch, those are covered. H V A C, there are some electrical components that can be changed out. My goodness, what else is in there? Windows is not, that's always a huge, huge one that everybody wants to get funding for, but windows is not. Let's see, eligible prayers. Okay. Heating, cooling already said that. Water heater, that's one missing.
The one that's not is plumbing also.
Yes. Yeah. I do believe though, that some things, in order to replace the certain unit, there are some things that qualify. So you just kind of go to over and say, hey, in order for them to, to replace this, these water heater, this has to be done too. And that's kind of what they look at as far as electrical components need to be done, because a lot of those H V A Cs, they're, you know, breaker upgrades and whatever have to happen in order for them to happen. So they kind of threw that electrical component part in there for that. And one of the things that does come up is mobile homes. As long as the homeowner owns a home and owns the plot, those are available, those are. So that was one of the big things that we learned going through the Huntington application. So all homeowners have to be updated on their taxes and have home insurance. There are some that, that really, yeah, the tax part in home insurance, you'd be surprised how many we went through. We're like, oh, that's not, that's not, that's not gonna work.
That's gonna be interesting with what, what's gonna happen with property tax. So that could make some people eligible that aren't eligible now.
True. That's true too.
Assuming they pay off.
Right. 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 And so those are all the things that after awarded, after Markle would be awarded, those are all the things that we would work with the town through. And we've already had these homeowner application cycles done two or three different times. So we've kind of got it down to a science as far as what to do.
And this will be strictly home owned, homes, not apartments?
Correct.
And they're homeowner occupied. So that's, that's obviously the name of the program. Now, the, the application process compared to other grant applications we've had, this one's more like an easy.
Very different. Yeah. So, so say like water, you know, or wastewater or heavy construction project, O C R does a proposal and then O C R comes and visits and says, okay, these are things you wanna see. And then you put an application. With O R, it's just the application. And there is not, I would say there is fifty percent less of the items that you would need for O R versus the construction, basically. So not, not so like, oh my goodness, we've been there before. So the packet you have in front of you, I just kind of put some slides together on, you know, quick notes on what this program looks like. One of the things that we did with Bluffton that worked out really well, before they even knew they were going to apply, they were just thinking about it, we put out a survey. And it was just basically like, if we do this, would you apply? And so, or what, and the next question was, okay, if you click yes, it would move you on to another question. And it would say, are you, do you have home insurance? And do you have, are you updated on your taxes? They gave us all of this criteria that made their application so much easier to, like, basically talk about. And so since Markle has already had three that applied in, oh, in Huntington's O R cycle, we have that as a little bit of leverage already saying, okay, well, they've already, you know, they, we already had three that applied with Huntington County. One, Huntington County is actually helping. And they, they filled out the application with us in Huntington. And they're the ones, one of the ones that were awarded. So they're gonna be getting help.
And this doesn't, and I, this is one of the questions I asked, this doesn't conflict with Huntington's work on that too. What it does is, it actually allows us to focus on just Markle and then they can focus on other communities too that don't have this going.
Exactly. Because they are interested in doing it again. And you can, you can keep doing it, but you have to make, I mean, have to go through all the, the closeout process, you know, all the procedure and stuff. But they can't be doing one until, and then keep going. They've gotta close one out and then start with the next. So in that packet, in the back, it does say, there's a, I just put a couple examples of what that survey looks like from, for Bluffton. I was gonna say Huntington, but that's not it. So it just kind of gives you, sorry, it's very small. Gives you a few questions. They actually had a huge, I would say the largest survey response that we've ever had on any survey. I mean, you start saying, we're gonna fix your home for free, that gains a lot of traction now. So one of the things that communities I've seen decide to do and decide not to do is basically holding a lien on their home for a certain amount for, per year. There's a, there's some O C R language in there that I, I don't know off the top of my head, but one entity chose not to do that because we're already dealing with people that can't afford to fix their homes. So why would you wanna put a lien? And then there's another community that said, well, we kind of want that protection. So O C R doesn't care either way. We just have to state that, if we apply. If we apply. And then some of the questions in the back, frequently asked questions, I put those in there in case you wanted to look. But each home can only go up to twenty-five thousand per home. That's kind of where they make it, make a cap on each home. I, I can't, I haven't seen a home yet that's used twenty-five thousand. So we estimate thirteen to fifteen homes on the three hundred and fifty thousand. You could move up to twenty if somebody only needs to spend five thousand on, you know, a certain repair. If they only need a, a ADA to, you know, you're not spending twenty-five thousand per home. So that does add up, you know, to other homes. So it's hard to estimate exactly, you know, how many homes you could actually reach, but there's an approximation.
This is not just low income, it could be a moderate income home. Kind of where we're meeting right in that, we're meeting right in there too with most of the homes here at Markle's.
Yeah. So there's a spreadsheet that we have that puts everything in, like at a percentage, I guess. And so, and you can go off the percentage. Markle would put together, it's like a scoring committee. And according, you know, we helped with that obviously, but, and then that committee goes through and chooses ultimately how you want to score, you know, those, those homes and who to pick. Yeah. So, let's see here. I'm missing anything. I don't wanna get too far, I don't wanna get too far down in the application, like if it's awarded, but we try, right now with Huntington's, we're, it's, it's a slow moving grant because of the way that it's set up, it's state funds. So you have to do an environmental, this is hopefully gonna be changed by next round or the round after. You have to do environmental review on each property. And that is the most time consuming portion of this. Region 3A does that. But, you know, if you're looking at a county versus a city or town, we're dealing with twenty-five to thirty homes who we're doing individual environmental reviews on. And so we know that, you know, that shippo takes thirty days to get back. So we're, we've learned when we're dealing with more than fifteen, that we're just doing them in chunks. So the first ten are the ones we're starting. It's a slow moving process just because of that environmental review. So we're hoping, we've heard that they are lobbying against do making, it just doesn't make sense.
So the first steps, if we say, go ahead, let's just go ahead and do this, would be just evaluating where we're, what our need is first?
Yeah. Yeah. I would suggest, so my, you know, you're already ahead of the game just thinking about it because what you, that C D G form that's in front of you guys, that is the application for this last round. They don't have an updated one. It's gonna be exactly the same or just slightly, just slightly different for next round. I don't know when they're gonna open this back up in twenty twenty-six, but I would assume February, March, I would bet. And then I think they're gonna do it two or three times in two thousand twenty-six. They haven't confirmed. They don't like to give us specifics this early on. But, so you already had the game just because they're just thinking about it. But doing a survey would, that would give you guys a lot of information on what Markle, you know, residents are thinking about. How could they benefit from it? Who would? And gives us, it gives a really good data. One thing that we did with Bluffton that we did not do with Huntington. In Bluffton, we just, at the very end, we said, if you'd like to leave your name, address and phone number if you're interested in this.
Good idea.
And I think we got, I think close to fifty-five just that way. Now, whether they will be eligible or not, you know, we don't know, but just getting that many in, in this survey, that huge, that shows huge need as far as the application goes. So, yeah. So hopefully that, I try not to make it too long, but.
It is.
I think so. So if you'd like to start a survey, I can do that. I can show you, I can obviously send it to you and so you can see what it looks like, but that's, that's totally, that's totally up to you guys.
Does anyone have any questions?
No. I'd say we go ahead with the survey and the guys, yeah.
Okay. I can put a draft survey together and I can send it to you guys.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, of course.
And I will corporate that as the 3A report too. Let's move on to Mr. Klein.
Alright, thanks. As soon as you guys know, you created a economic development target area within a town. What we're thinking about to do is try to create a point system, an application for individual essentially downtown business, building owners, not businesses, but building owners. That would seek a tax abatement consideration, that there'd be kind of a guideline. I don't, I don't want you to adopt it as like a resolution or, you know, set it in stone. We're gonna make you do lots of flexibility to be able to adjust away, you know, for a project.
I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Sorry. To, to have, you know, some flexibility within the points. So that's why we, I don't, we don't wanna adopt it as like a resolution, whether we have to follow this or anything of that nature. So, but wanted to get some guidelines on the process. One, the points. Two, you know, do you want a review committee to take a look at the applications and then bring them to the board? So just kind of getting some guidance on what those next steps are. And kind of getting some guidelines or getting some feedback on the points, on what you think, you know, what should the minimum investment be for them to qualify for consideration of the tax abatement, whether that be rehabilitation, construction or new construction within that area as well. So right now, you know, as we kind of look at it, if for, for the score for, you know, rehabilitation of a, of a downtown space, right now it starts at five thousand, could be less than that. Again, this is just suggestion. I don't know what the board thinks on what the number is. Five thousand too low? Should we be starting at a higher number than that for investment? You know, understanding that just because you do ten thousand doesn't mean it's going to equate that amount of assets. Value change could be much more than that depending on what you do. Could be not recognized whatsoever in a, in a change which means they wouldn't actually see any savings because they're also not seeing an increase in their assessed value. The process of what this looks like is the same as it is for any manufacturing type tax abatement that you've done in the past. There's still a resolution that needs to be completed. A statement about this that needs to be completed. All of those, that process that's forward that you guys would still need to approve.
I think we had some short conversation on this. On, on your, like, description, you have twenty-five hundred listed as like the minimum here.
Yeah. I didn't know if everybody got that. And so like, I, I did kind of an application guideline and I had twenty-five hundred. And then I kind of, when I started working the points, I thought, I don't know, twenty-five maybe sounds too low. But then I forgot to go back to the application and up it to twenty-five hundred.
So if you see a difference, on this page, it's got twenty-five hundred as the minimum. And same as this bullet point here, it's got twenty-five hundred, but then the minimum on this scoring sheet has five thousand. That would be the reasoning for those differences. When it was originally proposed to me, I, I was actually okay with twenty-five hundred bucks. If they're going through this process and it, and it meets a twenty-five hundred dollar threshold, you know, you can go and say, hey, look, you're, you're not gonna score very well, right? And incentivizes. So I, I think that, like, even though it's still a low number. But I also thought about if somebody's needing, you know, help to get a project done, maybe it's, maybe it's to make something compliant to sell or to move on from or complete a project or whatever it is, and, you know, if we wanted to be picky or not. It's just they're not gonna get very much money as far as in front of the board for that either. That's all that's gonna be. So it would just be if they wanted to go through those steps and maybe we make an exception for somebody that can't complete a project or sell a building or get a rental in or whatever that might be, you know, to create funds for themselves. That would be the only reason to have that as a lower number there. But it's just not gonna score well either way if it's five thousand or twenty-five hundred. So.
I think you have, just to keep it consistent, twenty-five.
Yeah. I would say we just suggest that to twenty-five hundred and it's just, either way, I don't think it's gonna score very well. So as, as far as like, who should take these into consideration, do you, do you think our downtown development group would be a good, good option to go, you know, work with them on, then to, to bring to us first?
I mean, that was my thought. Essentially that group is myself, Nick and Mike, to review those applications and make a recommendation to the board. Cause at least, you know, Nick has a city board member already that has a board member on there that can take a look and provide some feedback with the board's perspective and then bring it to the board.
Yeah. I think we'd help coach those people as well, where we could work hand in hand with them and get a, get a good litmus test of before it actually comes to public meeting and they have to lay out all their numbers in front of us. So.
And this, and as you can kind of see in the application, very similar to, to what is just presented in some of the requirements, right, has to be up to date on taxes. Anybody who files has to file, they, they have to use. One of the things that we did put in there again with the suggestion is they have to use a licensed contractor. They have to file permits. They have to do all the, so those are all things that have to be filed with the, with us for compliance. The likelihood is, is most projects you're gonna want, and, and it's probably gonna be the same as, you know, they need to go through this process before they pull permits. Because again, it's an incentive, it's an, it's, they, we're incentivizing you to do this. If you've already pulled the permits, it's not so much an incentive anymore as you're doing it. Although even people pull permits and still don't do things, but we wanna see this happen before permits are pulled and then we wanna see those permits for projects.
Again, it's probably one of those thresholds where if it's a project that's big enough to amount to, for a reason, they're probably gonna be doing those things anyways, right, where they're gonna be using a licensed contractor. Where if it's a, you know, twenty-five hundred dollar project, they could probably do something like that themselves where it's probably not something that you're gonna go down those steps if you may. So.
Anything else? I will start it at twenty-five. I will, any other adjustments you wanna see in the numbers? Do you want that twenty-five, just started at twenty-five, from five thousand still going up to fourteen ninety-nine and keeping everything the same?
Yeah.
If you guys are good with that, then we'll change it. If you guys are good with the concept, then we'll move forward. I think we have somebody to talk to already on possibilities. So we'll sit down with them, have a conversation, work through an application and then come back with a recommendation.
Good.
Yeah, go ahead. Anything else? Just remind our, our speakers or guests or presenters, once you're done, you're, you're welcome to, to stay. It gets fun.
Okay. Yeah. You can learn, you can learn things during the season.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay. Just stay. Don't feel like you have to. Let's then move on to the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six, the twenty twenty-six salaries. We, we spent a lot of time looking this over and that's intentional because since, at least since I've been on that council, we've not really, we've done some kind of look at hard data and this year, you know, Mike and John and I and the other council members, we really took some time looking at this. The one thing I'll say is, when I came on to the council, what was that, about eight years ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Somewhere between.
About that.
Last year and twenty years ago. The, the wages were a certain amount and they, they've increased rapidly. In fact, they've, and I looked at the communities about our size, the ten to twelve communities around us that are about our size and how fast we've raised the wages compared to them over the same period. And we raised faster than them. However, that sounds awful. However, when we started that process, when I looked at those numbers eight years ago, we were, we were the lowest of the twelve. So now we are, we are, we're at a rate right now where we're paying very competitively and that's reflective of what we did there just at the dinner, awarding people with retention, you know, recognizing that they're appreciating, appreciating their retention. So when, when we looked it over, these salaries, this ordinance, to me, these reflect what I think are competitive rates. And I think it shows, it's, it's reflective of, of the kind of commitment our employees have provided us in this community, the long-term employment relationship. And just, you know, some careful considerations and I'll say that right now on the ordinance. And I can go through the ordinance real quick, but I just wanted to give a preface on that. Anything you guys want to add before I go on?
No.
So the ordinance, it sets out the, the pay rates and the, you know, the different employees that we have here. It also discusses where that money's gonna come from, fifty percent, the council members ourselves. We're paid fifty percent water utility. Our, our, our pay comes from water jail in twenty-five and wastewater utility twenty-five. I also wanna mention that once again, there's been none of us who have had any interest in increasing our compensation at all this year. We're, we're still among the low, we're in the low half of pay for council members, but I don't think there's a concern right now of increasing that anytime soon. Especially if it gets back to our employees. And then they talk about how the clerk treasurer's paid thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-three respectively. The town marshals are paid a general fund, assistant manager, operations manager, general town assistants, fifty, twenty-five and twenty-five. Water supervisors paid with the water utility, waters, wastewater is paid with wastewater utility, utility clerk is paid with the funds that are fifty and fifty for wastewater, wastewater utility. Then talks about the, what their park board's being paid, part-time employees, part-time deputies, compensation for time and a half. It goes on to talk about what paid holidays are in the handbook. The rest of it's pretty form of what was in place last year. And the certification awards for police department. And also the recognition for employee appreciation. I don't have anything else to discuss on this. I'll make a motion that we approve, unless you guys have anything discussion, that we approve of and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six. I'll second that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Moving on then to the Board of Zoned Appeals. John, Ray is for your turn.
Sure.
That's the response I got. I said, that's the response I got. Kim sent me an email and said, and I said, are you okay with that before I said, oh, please, Jim? And he was like, sure. He's very enthusiastic about it.
Yeah, I could tell. He made me every third year.
Since he's been on.
Oh, really?
That's what I was told originally.
And so that, you guys okay with that appointment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. Next one. Wells County nine-one-one board appointment. One year term, Mike Grant.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Sure. Sure. Okay, we're good. Any town correspondence? I'd seen the operation manager's report.
I don't have much. We are kind of at a standstill on construction on Lee Street because of weather. Once the temperatures get up a little bit, they do intend to continue concrete work with sidewalks. So we'll keep moving as we can as weather permits. And there are some payoffs that need to be signed.
Of course.
We'll get to that later. I did get a proposal for video marketing that we had discussed. It's a smaller package than the initial proposal. I didn't feel that we needed that much. The Chamber of Commerce has offered to pay for three thousand of that. The total package price is ninety thousand dollars, which is significantly cheaper than anybody. In fact, Huntington County was at a chamber meeting and they were kind of envious because they hired the exact same person. She had every, and they're like, how did you manage to get that? Because she lives in Markle.
You can see and watch some of her stuff that she's done before and it's, it's good professional quality.
And all the, all the work that she did, of course, last year was free. She did not charge us anything last year for all the videos. It's more, she wanted to help, help the community out, but also kind of get her brand up and running.
Yep. It's under twenty-five thousand, so we don't have to have it for free. I say go for it.
Yep.
And then I intend to try and, last year I did get some, some marketing grant funds. I'm gonna apply for those grants again. So if we get those, we'll offset the cost of this.
I think we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a definite return from that above what the investment is.
Absolutely.
Uh, Seeta, okay, you guys, I feel like there's a really good use of that.
Yep. I think that's a matter of.
Perfect.
That's all I got.
Okay. Any questions? HQ report. Joe Town Marshall report.
I emailed my report. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay. When's the new, the new officer, when's that?
Middle of February. February council, maybe.
Thank you. HQ report.
Yeah, so our, we, we are still down an executive director for Huntington County. Normally, Mark would come around and ask for a re-up of the MDS meeting or the January meeting for his services. The board is asking for us to, you know, to take a motion or just get an approval, as well as an appointment for next year, just to continue on with our current twenty-twenty-five agreement, until we have an executive director hired, and then let him come back and actually propose the, the new document. And just live, right now we're the, you know, we're a shell of a, the board is operating, the president is doing most of internal management if there's needed, and the one employee, part-time employee, she's, she's doing all the books still. So, they just asked, instead of, instead of visiting all the entities for that voting power, just to continue on with our current agreement with HQ, like we could take a, take an agreement on that. I don't even know if it's necessary to make that motion, but to, to live under that standard until we actually get a new executive director hired.
So effectively, it would be, we would go to a month-to-month agreement?
Yeah, I mean, and I hope that we all can vote on it month-to-month, but.
No, 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 we can, we can, we can vote, say that we're okay month-to-month until the new contract comes, under the twenty-twenty-five terms.
Correct, correct.
You guys okay with that?
Yep. I'll make that motion that we continue on with HQ contract just like it is, month-to-month until the new executive director is assigned.
And then the appointment still being, I'm the representative on that, I'm in the board, so.
I'll second that motion, and we'll put that caveat added, so, we're not caveat, just information added.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. We have now limited public comments and questions. Okay, the old business, I want to bring up something I was talking to Jonathan about just a moment ago. The, I've been working on a, a program to help civic organizations, churches, posts, you know, fraternal organizations, youth development organizations that are not, basically nonprofit, that are folk, and it's the focus will be rural communities. Huntington, Blackford, Wells, Adams Counties, that this area. One of the things that we're seeing is a, a lot of these organizations are losing board members. And they're getting so small that they're just folding. The Eagles, for example, are, or the VFW in Bluffton are two examples that I'm thinking of right now off the top of my head. And we've got boards here, and we've got volunteer organizations here in Markle that are also struggling right now, especially with aging board leadership. The problem is attracting younger people to become a part of the, of the, the board and become active, and kind of re-energize the community. If we get them involved and get them invested into the community, when they're, when they're just getting out of high school, they're getting young, eighteen to forty, they'll stay. They'll tend to stay because they have an investment. So I've been working and getting some speakers together to, to have this program put together. And I've also been able to secure some financing for the program, so it won't cost the town of Markle anything, except to make the space available to host it. And right now, tentatively, it's still going to be the carriage house, and if it, if there's an overfill, it'll be a church Christ. The, which is a gracious thing, that the people who are speak, going to be the speakers would be Chloe, Chloe Anoknos, who is with America's Future, they help match people who are eighteen to forty with, with people, with boards that need help, or boards are looking for people to become a part of their organization. She's a, her specialty is marketing, direct marketing. She had worked on presidential campaigns in the past, and she's a, a young person who's, who's really great. She's actually married to a state representative too, which doesn't really come into play, but it's, you know, she's showing that she's, she's, she's really good, is what I hear. Bill Moran from Wells County Extension is going to be a speaker, and Rory Antrim, who's with the First Bank of Burn, is also going to be a speaker. And I may speak for about five minutes about the legalities of boards and what you need to do to protect yourself. So, that's going to take place February third to Tuesday, eight-thirty to noon, sharp. It's going to be at the carriage house, the, to participate, it's free. We're going to get, I'm going to talk to the D E S to, so we can purchase some pastries local. I've already talked to a coffee house, because I'm not going to serve tar water to anybody. I'm going to serve great coffee, that's my thing. I'm snobby about that, so I've already got a coffee house who's going to donate coffee. So this will be, I'm, we're looking, hopefully get, hoping to get twenty participants, hoping to get a lot more than that. And I've already started talking about it to Rotary Clubs and other organizations, and they're, they're just, they're championing at the bit. They want to see the flyer, they want to, and they want to know where they can sign up. I think right, right now, if I, without advertising, without putting it out there, I've got eight, eight organizations interested, so. I'll, I'm going to give, send Jonathan a copy of a flyer and see about what we can do to get that, to get that out there. And thank his newspaper, they've been really good to us over the years, and hope we've been good to them too, so. Nothing more than that, just would also thank the First Bank of Burn for supporting that too financially. Nothing else on that. If there's any, no other old business, we'll move on to the clerk treasurer report.
Oh, right, like Mike said, we had some big payoffs for that project. So, in general, we had eighty-five vouchers for seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Water rate twenty-two for e-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Wastewater there at nine, twenty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. For a total of eleven, one-hundred-and-eleven vouchers, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-one dollars even. We have one adjustment this month. I'm sure you would really appreciate that adjustment. I got a toilet leaking, and I didn't realize it for a few days, and it really added up, so. He's got all his paperwork in, he hasn't had an adjustment in the past year, so we could grant, for him, he greatly appreciated it. The only other thing I have is I sent you guys with the email today that I sent you, just tentative, council meeting scheduled for twenty-six. I mentioned that the October date may be difficult for Nick and I, depending on, you know, if he does a trip or something like that, or if we happen to do a trip, that does fall in our kids' fall break. Other than that, I didn't see any conflicts that I would have, but if you guys have any that you know of right now, we can at least kind of get the ball rolling, and hey, we might have to look at that in a little bit. But I do try to get, or I need to get a, at least tentative schedule out to the papers first of the year, so.
So, your kids and next kids, are, we already know there's a conflict in October?
They're, they're on fall break that week, so if, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they will be taking a trip, I don't know if I will, but there's a chance we could be, because they'll, they're off school that week, so.
Kind of what I'm suggesting here is, is why don't we just put that right now as a different day?
Okay, that works.
You okay? And I know, Blake, you're a pretty busy person.
Your Wednesdays, I don't, I've got elders meetings on all the other Wednesdays.
Well, we can, we can do it on another day that we.
Yeah, if we, if we start talking about it now, we might be able to get into Blake's schedule.
Tuesdays, I leave a small group on Tuesdays, so I can't do that.
What about Monday?
Mondays, I quit myself a leave, so my Mondays are freed up now, so.
Okay, this will be October, right? And we can't do it the Monday before our normal meeting, so maybe the Monday before that, that's Columbus Day, I think.
Yeah, Columbus Day is the twelfth, which I don't really care. We, we're here, right? Our office is open on Columbus Day, we'll be here, it's up to you guys.
I can do the nineteenth.
Well, the nineteenth.
Well, it'll be the same thing, it'll be a break.
So that's why I was looking at the.
Okay, twelve.
Or it could be Thursday.
Or Thursday. Well, Thursdays are really bad for.
I can do, I can do the twelve.
Okay, twelve, let's go for the twelve.
Okay.
And I will, September may be a conflict with me, it doesn't mean I can't attend, I'll just may have to attend video.
Okay.
Because the, the organizations that ask me to come and speak usually start about next month. So when there's the D R I down, they're having a conference in San Antonio, and they, I think they want to have me speak on some stuff, so. I'll know, I'll know by the end of next month.
Okay, we can just keep it as it is, we'll do it October twelfth instead of the twenty-first, and then if something comes up in the meantime, we can always reschedule as needed, but at least we'll get this out and see what happens.
Yeah, and as with me, I'm not, it's not a vacation, so I can just go back to my room and do the, the day, the meeting, so.
That works.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
All right, then I will make a motion, oh, any, any questions for Stephanie?
No, none for me.
I'll make a motion, we pay the vouchers, accept the report, and pay the, the wally.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries, we are adjourned. I had to take these out because my AirPods work better.